All right, good evening, everybody. This is Monday, August 13th, 2018. It's 4:30 PM. We're in the Thomas J. Swart Council Chambers. This is a work session tonight. And we're gonna try to get through the meeting tonight. All right. We're gonna have Mayor's Awards next week. We also are selling some properties. The first is a consideration of a sale of property locally known as 311 South 9th Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tisner?
This property is located on the west side of 9th Street, just north of Maple, south of Elm, and east of 10th Street. One of what we acquired through the abandoned building program. We have had interest in the property. We've had two bids submitted for the minimum amount on this currently for rehab. We have had discussions previously with the Maple Leaf Center, is there on Maple Street, about they're interested in acquiring. So going through the conditions, we do have the, for all three that, tonight, whether they are rehabbed or demolished, what the different timeframes are on that. So this does, is a two-bedroom, one-bath, does need quite a bit of work, a lot of junk removed from the property. Plumbing, electrical needs upgraded. As we try and tell people they have interest in these properties, they cannot move in until it is rehabbed to minimum occupancy standards. We've had even just this morning, someone stop in and ask about buying one of our houses and moving in and working on it. And we told them, no, that's not allowed. So we continue to try and get that word out, but some people just see $500 house, I'll buy it and move in and do some paint and it'll be good. But the houses we acquire are abandoned for a reason, and they do require quite a bit of work to rehab. Anywhere from generally $5,000 to $30,000 is kind of a rough range that they require. But if it is to be rehabbed by the purchaser, work shall be initiated within 60 days, rehab within 180 days, and another 180-day extension. If it's gonna be demolished, shall be completed within 90 days of approval per purchase, within a 60-day extension if needed. So I have a couple of timeframes on there that we wanna see action regardless of what moves forward with it.
I've been in that home. It's gonna make a lovely house for somebody. Counsel.
Questions?
Okay. Number three is public hearing, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1906 Melvin Avenue, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Mr. Tisner?
This is located in Lennox Park, south of Lennox, off of Melvin, just north of Sturzings Food there, is a rather large lot, 100 by 120-foot lot. Does have a mobile home on the property currently, not in very good condition at all, has some sewer breaks on the property. We did have, have had an interested bidder to purchase the property, demo it, and then build a new structure on the property. Based on the condition of the structure and the sewer, we did put a condition that this is to be demolished. It isn't something that could be rehabbed. Mobile home by our zoning code wouldn't be allowed here today regardless, but just based on the condition, it is, shall be required to be demolished within 90 days, and then receive a building permit prior to transfer of deed. That is what the current purchaser offer is, to demo it and build a new structure.
Could you say there's a sewer line?
There's a sewer break there, yeah.
Okay.
On private property.
On private, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys good?
Yep.
Number four is?
The demo on that is up to the purchaser. It's not something we're gonna demo, and then hand over, they demo it, and then they build new.
Okay. Brings us to number four, consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1003 Chalfont Street, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions. Back to that one again. Mr. Tisner?
Similar, or same as before, small lot, 30-foot lot by 300 foot, so it is a very long and narrow lot. Does require quite a bit of rehab as well. Do have multiple offers on this and others interested. I think some neighbors have expressed interest in acquiring it to expand their lot size. As you can see, a lot of the, at least a lot to the north are rather narrow lots and long lots. So I think both of those neighbors have interest in acquiring and demoing. We do still have some that are interested in acquiring and rehabbing. So based on what the offer is accepted, there are some timeframes for demolition if they're awarded or rehabbed.
You guys good? Man, that's, kinda sits back, man. It's a nice little privacy spot there. Okay. Brings us to number five, consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 3129, being an ordinance created in the D-Wall Plaza PUD, planned unit development by making changes to Section 3B land use design criteria and Section 5, 50-foot barrier park, or, I'm sorry, 50-foot buffer park. I'm gonna go first to read it on that. Mr. Tisner?
So this is an existing PUD that was adopted quite a while ago, I think in the early 2000s, for the development along Lawrence Avenue. It's expanded to the properties on the south side of Mason Road with continued development, and has had some amendments over the last few years on that. So for reference, the area in blue is the D-Wall PUD. Some of the changes or requests here are specific to Lot 7, which is in the southeast corner here. Couple of the amendments, Lot 7 shall be allowed as residential, including multifamily residential. Currently, it's a C1 limited commercial. PUD does not allow residential, so the primary request is to allow residential on the eastern portion of this lot, which does follow our general transition from like commercial to multifamily residential, kind of the stair-step of zoning. And then with the residential further to the east and along the north side of Mason Road, that transition fits from a zoning perspective as well. And then the 50-foot buffer park, there is a buffer on the backside of the properties here, in order to shield residential from commercial, so the thought here is have a little smaller 30-foot buffer between residential and commercial here, whether that's landscape berms or bushes or something along that effect. So those are the two requested changes. Again, from a zoning perspective, that's the natural transition from C1 to R4. I know there's information in your packet, concerns from the airport as well. One of the changes in the PUD a few years ago, we put in some height restrictions on all the lots south of Mason Road. Those are more restrictive than the height restrictions of the FAA guidelines, their flight pattern. So our PUD already imposes height restrictions that are more restrictive than required by the airport or the FAA. I think part of their comments or concerns primarily then would lead towards the land use, what's appropriate around the airport. We do have some minimal zoning in our, airport zoning in our code, but nothing that specifies what's appropriate around there. They cited some land use guidebooks. Those again are not adopted documents, those are kind of recommendations or items to look at or consider when considering rezonings. And I think in Chapter 3 of it, it specifically states, appropriate density within the vicinity of an airport can be a challenge, and density can vary from airport to airport depending on the needs associated with communities, type of airport or aircraft used. So these aren't nationals, it's not a national standard, it's kind of a recommended guideline, but something to take into account, but also realizing each community is different. Each community has different needs, different uses of the airport. So really, it's a guidebook to, one tool to look at, but it's not anything that says you have to use this or you have to do that. One other map that's in there, just for reference, to show where this property's at in relation to the airport. So this is the end of the runway. This lighter green here is the runway protection zone. There's no construction allowed in that. This building here is just outside of that. It does have some major height restrictions. Along the sides are the transitional zones. This is the lot being considered right here. As you can see, as the airport goes out, Stonegate Apartments here at the end of the airport. Village Cooperative is in the transitional zone, that was constructed a few years ago at Mason Metals. We do have quite a bit of development in those areas. We are conscious of the height restrictions. Generally, our zoning code's more restrictive than airport guidelines, and then in this case, the PUD made it even more restrictive, so we're trying to take those factors into account. But I know the airport did submit a letter and does have their concerns, they wanted to pass along as well.
Would you like me to comment?
Anything you wanna say? You're here, man, you might as well.
Mike Pearson, 611 Monticello Drive. So as Eric said, we're simply asking for an addition to the options for zoning allowed there in the PUD. So currently, it's commercial, and we're asking to additionally have the option of single multifamily development there, which is less dense than what it's currently set up for. So if you have a house or apartment building, it's less dense than a restaurant or a hotel. So only thing we're doing is making a small area of transition that would go fit in nicely here. I talked to Eric about it before I brought it up, probably a month and a half ago, we sat down and talked about it. And I just asked him in general, I said, what do you think? Is there any place that would be appropriate here to do this kind of thing? And he specifically brought that up, and that was exactly what I was thinking. So we had a congruent thought that this is something appropriate. I never bring anything before the council that I don't have complete agreement with the Development Department on. I'm not here to cause any controversy or anything else. I know the Airport Authority expresses concerns, but they've done that each time. I've had anything come forth here consistently. So again, I think we've done our homework appropriately, and it's thought through with the Development Department.
Sounds good to me. Any questions for Mr. Pearson?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Thank you for your support.
Can I ask things? I'm from the Airport Authority.
Sure.
Yes, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm brand-new to the Airport Authority, but what I've gathered from what they've talked about this piece of property, they're considering-
Come on, sorry, can you give us your name and address?
Elizabeth Van Vliet-Sally at 501 Harrison, Burlington. I've only been to two meetings so far, but this has been one of the major discussions they've had. And one of the considerations they have is that they're considering a multi-story building, and it's in the proximity of the takeoff area of the airport, and they're concerned with safety if it's too tall. And also, another concern they're having with the airport is the FAA may came in and shorten the runway, or require that they have a 50-foot tower on top of the building if they have a tall building with a big light on top of it for airplanes when they come in and go out, so they can see that building there. It is a safety issue to have a larger building there. My, personally, I don't have a problem with single-story, but I've heard that they've been talking about a three-story building there, and that is not recommended by the airport, and the FAA may cut the runway down. And if you cut the runway down, you're gonna have a problem with businesses, because you keep shortening these runways, which is gonna be the second time I think they've done that, you keep shortening the runways, and some of those bigger airplanes won't be able to take off. And so those are things for you to consider when you're making your decision on this.
Eric, didn't you say there was already height restrictions in there?
Yeah, based on the FAA guidelines, when we went through the PUD amendment, at this point, it's kinda hard to see here, but the lot and questions right here, from the FAA, the 50-foot maximum is this kind of light line here, 100 feet is right here, and then it goes out to 150 feet here. Under the PUD, the maximum is 50 feet. So our restrict, our code is much more restrictive than what the FAA is.
He's asking for an ordinance change, though, and so we're considering that you're considering a change in this PUD.
It's not going to affect-
Even if you wanted to build a building, it would still have to be within the 50 feet, which would be, which would fall within the guidelines.
And I want you to know the airport does have concerns with that particular-
Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth, I had a question, but why did they shorten the runway? Educate me on that, I don't know that.
It's one of those FAA rules that if you have too much density around the airport, the FAA comes in and makes the airplanes back up, so that when they take off, there's not the danger zone. That is kind of close to a danger zone. It, the property line uputs right up to the airport safety zone. They're right together, and so you have to kind of be consider, consider that. And so what they do is they keep chopping back the airport, and that's one of the things that the authority is concerned about, is them cutting it back.
But as long as our building's under 50 feet, they're not gonna do that, right?
Per their current height restrictions, it wouldn't affect it on this side. I think one of the concerns was the other side of the same runway. There was, in the late 90s, early 2000s, some homes built right at the end of the runway protection zone that were within that height area, and they made a modification to the end of that runway to correct it.
Yeah, the FAA is still going to do what they do.
That's where we had to, they had to shorten it. They adjusted the runway protection zone on the east side.
Yeah, they might do that. So we have to kind of give that some consideration. And Mary, I think, is looking into all of that to see what they might do.
And thank you for coming down again. Elizabeth, thank you.
That was on the Summer Street side. These do fall within the guidelines.
And Mike, you're aware of these, right? These height?
That was the first thing I did before I pursued anything here, just reconfirmed everything. And Jeff Miller with Klingner and Associates is where I go. He has all the maps, and I go through that with him to just reconfirm, making sure before this came through again, that the PUD is already set up to ensure that it's less than what any FAA requirement is. And additionally, on the, on the west side of Highway 61, number years ago, the Airport Authority wanted to have additional rights there, and they went ahead and they contacted us, and we made an agreement to sell some air rights to them. You know, so if they have interest in doing something more restrictive than that, they can always contact me. And I shared that with Mary after playing commission meetings. So I mean, at this point, we're doing everything within the requirements from the FAA, and again, consistent with, we're not asking to change the height. That's already in place. Everything's the same. All we're doing is requesting a lower-density alternative here. And I have multiple things that we're, it's not just one thing I'm looking at here, there's, just like the rest of the development, I have concepts for all 17 acres that I'm trying to pursue, and none of this happens overnight, and it's just a matter of effort and having things set up, planned appropriately, which is what I'm doing here, so there's no guarantee of anything happening on this spot necessarily. I have a couple of different alternatives, not sure how everything will turn out, but I'm making sure that the rules are set up appropriately to have this flexibility to have a transition from the commercial through residential here for that spot. Appreciate your support.
You guys good?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And Mrs. Van Vliet-Sally, how is? It's complicated, I'm trying to get the process. Okay. Number six, a consideration of a facilities agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, for the use of fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex.
So we have some language in your packet on this. Did receive an email just this afternoon from them as well. Was hoping they'd be here to discuss that. But one of the, I guess, questions, just for clarification, I think in your packet was the contribution amount. We originally, they talked, we requested 20,000 over 10 years. You've made the request to have a five-year agreement with a five-year renewal. So under that, number four was the thought to have 10,000 in the first five years, or 20,000 in the first five years, or just wanted to clarify that. Is it a 20,000 total, or 10,000 in the first five years, and if there's a renewal, another 10,000, or what amount was contemplated by the council there?
Okay. So where were, what was the last?
Where was SCC at? That was my concern.
SCC pays approximately 6,000 annually. They are-
But they're using the main fields, not the practice?
Not always. They use these same practice fields as well when they're not available, but they do have more use in the inside fields that are maintained a little better. But they're paying a cash amount. CISA's talked about a in-kind contribution donation amount.
Have we not suggested just taking care of those fields, closing it up, and charging them the same amount?
We've talked about having it fenced in, it'd take time to continue, continue to make improvements to it, but as far as charging-
Is that not a practical suggestion?
That could be an option, yeah.
We have a, but I guess the only, the, I'm, I'm okay with it. Does that amount cover our costs to mow and maintain it?
We have approximately 2,500 annually, not to mow it, no, just in, about 2,000 to 2,500 annually in cost for fertilizer seed. We also pay the water irrigation and the lighting. Currently, they pay 500 in the fall for lighting. That would go away with this, 'cause they, once it gets darker earlier, they use more of the lights, but.
So do we have a, would you have an approximate idea, or could you give us an idea what our yearly costs are with the mowing and stuff?
Had that in memo previous?
I guess that, I'm, I'm all right with, yeah, I'm all right with them having an agreement, but I think we at least ought to, our maintenance costs a little.
Yeah, I remember one aspect of their, their presentation was trying to keep their costs low, so they could keep the cost low for the student, for the players, which I understand, so I don't wanna-
No, I don't wanna-
Not intend to make money, but.
Well, and they have made some other improvements, I don't wanna recognize that, but that, that was my goal, is kind of recognize the prior improvements they've made that also cover our costs.
So what they're recommending isn't a cash amount, it's a contribution-
Contribution, for other improvements.
It wouldn't cover cost, it would just, for future improvements to the reclex.
I just mean like in-kind, though.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah, just in cost for fertilizer, grass seed and stuff, it's about 2,500, some of the maintenance that we do.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with the 10.
I think I am, too. Just leave it as it is. 10 every five.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, there's tons of intrinsic value that they bring to the community with tournaments and just-
Throw it out.
I think, I think there's enough there that I don't see any reason why you need to change it.
No, I'm fine. We have a good working relationship with them. We have, and I like all the improvements that they've done in the past and continue to vow to do, and I think we need to continue.
Well, as long as we get the five-year option, then we, both parties need to discuss it again, because things might change as far as their petition, participation level, or their maintenance costs. I, I would be, this would be acceptable to me.
So a couple of other things in there. Per their email they just, again, sent this afternoon, they'd like to see a 10-year contract. I just wanted to pass that along.
Well, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So what, is that a, what, it's a no-go without a 10-year, without a 10-year deal, because?
I, I can't speak for them. They just said, they just wanna ensure they're able to continue to use the fields there. I know from our, talking to our attorney, just, they'd recommend the shorter duration based on kind of the unknown in the future. We do have an indoor facility coming onboard and just-
It's, well, it's basically a 10-year, it's a five-year with the option of renewing plot, right? So it's, in their eyes, it could be seen as a 10-year, but things change.
Yeah, they want 10 years, I think.
So, but it, but we're, I'm not gonna budge on that one, so.
And then, one thing, they, they sent me some changes through this agreement, and I apologize, I've just had a little time to go through it as well. Currently, we charge 500 annually for lighting. That would go away with this agreement. Wanted to make sure that was clear, 'cause they put it back in the agreement and then crossed it off, so I'm not sure why they added, I don't know if it's just to make sure we're all clear on that, but so that, currently, this fall, we'd still charge them the 500, 'cause I think this starts January 1 through-
So then the net benefits only 15,000 over a 10-year period, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I, that's kind of burning the candle at two ends of it.
Yeah, I think the 500 stays in.
And the last thing they had requested, I think is terminology Jim and I talked about, they wanted a payback if, for whatever reason, this was canceled. I think they just weren't clear on, for number four, we're gonna make the change that the contribution fee of 2,000 is in the form of cash or in-kind donation of approved equipment at the reclex, so it's, it's not a, they're not out 20,000 over these 10 years. If it's, it's, and if it's canceled, I think their concern was if it's canceled after three years, for whatever reason, they have to pay the full 20, or if they paid an amount that we're paying them back, but we're not collecting money. They're making improvements there, and if they put 10,000 in lights in, we're not gonna write them a check back for $2,000. So just one-
And Eric, I also understood that when they went to donate something, it was, had to be approved first. You couldn't just say, oh, we've got a great deal on grass seed, here's your donation or something. They have to let us know.
Yeah, it has to be approved by reclex manager, myself. Want to verify the amount and that it's something that's needed at the reclex, not just, they want it for their purposes, just wanna work together on that, that we're not surprised if something shows up out there, and that's our contribution when-
Yeah, that seems fair to me.
But you said, if we cancel it, I mean, I don't-
Their, their concern is that, that this is canceled or something, and they've spent money out there and-
Before the five years?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we'll ask them to spend 10,000 over a five-year period and spend an additional 10 over the next five years. I, I don't see any reason, I mean, once we're in this, I don't see how we can get out of it unless, unless one of the parties doesn't perform.
I'm just saying, yeah, I don't see any issue with the first five years, you know, and it's not like we're getting out of it after that. We still have to renew, so I mean.
Did you see anything else in there? I was just trying to cover some of the highlights that they put in here, but I didn't, I didn't know what their reason was exactly for some of them.
Yeah, that, that term doesn't make sense to have in here. One thing I would wonder about, the, when they made their presentation to you, and you all agreed to it, there was, one of the things that you did push back a little with them was the length of term on it. To talk about adding the $500 electric fee back in, at this point, I mean, you're now changing what you've told them, what you agreed to with them, if you try to put that back in.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we talked about the electric fee.
No, no, you didn't. Eric had brought it, brought it forward with some of his material, but you, you never asked, never asked to put that into the agreement. They were asking for it without that in it, and that's kind of what they left, assuming you were agreeing to. So if you're adding this at this point, you gotta, you do need to recognize that that's something different than what they had heard from you when you, when they were here.
Well, either that-
And I think it's, a lot of that has to do with just that you're talking about it now, realizing that that fee was there, and you just didn't recognize it.
Yeah, I, if you want, you could make it 12.5 for five years, and 25,000 total. Either way, it's the same. Because what Matt pointed out, it's, the net benefit is $5,000 less with, with the fee, 'cause I didn't realize that that fee was there, so I'm not, not really-
I'm not completely-
Ready to give that up.
That's 2,500.
You want the 500?
Yeah.
I think so, 'cause our maintenance fees are gonna continue to climb, and if we're cutting the deal on our end, and it's suddenly not such a good deal for us.
We're all down for the partnership, it's just the terms of the partnership, so. Are you guys good with that, what we've got then?
I don't, I don't want the $500 to not, to tear the deal down, though. I mean, if you think about the, the, from what the community makes on some of those tournaments that they bring in, $5,000 is really a drop in the bucket, but it is, it is something that needs to be discussed. So I just, I don't wanna see, I don't wanna see them back out. I don't wanna see-
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see them back out either, but if they're gonna back out over, out of $500, I mean, we're working with them, and we are partnering with them, so I mean, I don't know, you guys think about it? We've gotta, but we're, but we're all fine with going forward with the, with the 500, no change in that language, I mean, the majority is.
I'm definitely for trying.
Yeah, we need, we need to have a discussion with them, they're not here tonight, so. In, in, in general, I mean, 'cause I won't get caught again, 'cause we didn't have that. In general, I'd be in agreement, but I think we need to discuss that, because, you know, it is, it is amount of in-kind, we're already not covering our costs, our full costs, and we're covering our chemicals, but not the hours and the water, and, you know, we need to, we need to review that.
I think even if, if they paid the $500, you add up what they're gonna pay over a 20-year period, they're still getting a far better deal than any other organization in the community, because of what they've brought to the reclex, because of the tournaments they bring in. So, so I think it's important to remember, there still is a benefit there to them of thousands of dollars a year, so.
We good? Okay, guys. Number seven, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 97, industrial pretreatment requirements of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Is this the new publicity? Did you guys catch that?
This, amending this ordinance is accomplishing two things. One, the state, when they issued the MPDS permit that the wastewater plant is operating under now, had a requirement that we do a, an evaluation of what is referred to as the local limits. And that was precipitated by, it had been a long time since- And that was precipitated by, it'd been a long time since we'd done an evaluation, the current limits that are in the ordinance are from, dating back to nineteen eighty-two. The evaluation was to take into account the changes that were made with, at the wastewater treatment plant, they were designed in twenty-ten, they were online in twenty-twelve, we had not done a reevaluation of the local limits. The local limits are intended to protect the wastewater treatment facility and the environment from pollutants that could come in and harm any one particular process within the wastewater plant, which some of the processes did change with the improvements in twenty-ten, twenty-twelve. And protect the processes themselves, and also prevent pass-through to the receiving stream in the Mississippi River. And over that timeframe too, I'm sure that they determined through data collection and experience that the parameters that were used to evaluate processes back in nineteen eighty-two, they probably fine-tuned things and so on and so forth. So the, the one matter that's approached by this amendment is, we hired H.R. Green, they did an evaluation of the treatment processes, looked at the different pollutants that were required to be evaluated, and they came up with a new set of local limits. And this amend, the amendment incorporates those amended values, many of the values have been adjusted downward, there's a few that went up. This not only protects the wastewater treatment plant from the, the processes and the pass-through, it does have an impact on our industries. The industrial pretreatment program is the program that we implement and use to regulate some of the significant industrial users in our community. We issue a wastewater discharge permit to specific industries within our community, they have, have self-monitoring requirements, and they also have quality of discharge that they're allowed to discharge to us. They submit to us on a monthly basis reports, the same as we submit monthly reports to the state, showing what the quality of the effluent being released to the Mississippi is. And in those wastewater discharge permits, we have the limits, this change to the local limits does and has had, will have an impact on the limits that those industries have to operate under. Now, we've sent letters to those industries, we've let them know that we are looking at making this change due to the evaluation that was performed, they are aware of the limits, we've told them as far as the meetings for the readings of the ordinance, so if they have any issues or whatever, they'll have an opportunity. We want to make sure that they have the, feel like they have an opportunity to discuss that or make any comments about it.
And what way is this going to affect them, Don, I mean?
Well, we've watched, or we've looked at their monthly monitoring reports for the last few years to see how changing their effluent limits by, through this change would have impacted them in the last year or two. And what we've seen is, we've seen one or two instances where an industry has had a value in their mon, self-monitoring where they would have exceeded the limit, which would result in a notice of violation to that industry. In the cases where this has happened, it's been due to process upset, something failed within their system, so they, their systems as are, ours is subject to upset if something goes wrong, or a person makes a mistake or something like that. So they'll just have to operate under a little bit tighter, effluent limits just as what we do. The other factor that's in this proposed amendment is some language that comes out of the federal rule for streamlining the industrial pretreatment program. There are minor language changes to the ordinance, best management practices, slug loads, language that the federal government felt is necessary to put into permits that are issued to industries. It's basically just to clean up the, our ordinance, so we comply with federal rules.
So Don, are we being required to change these, or we're just being proactive in changing these?
No, we're required to change them.
Okay, and we're required to change them to the numbers listed in the packet, right?
Well, actually, I would say what we've done is, we've reserved ten percent space at the wastewater plant, the question was, is do we use up all our space for our existing industry? Meaning that if there were to be any growth by an industry, we would have to go to our other industries and say, we need some space for this company, we're going to have to limit you further on your processes. Or if we had a new industry wanting to come in, we'd have to go to all our existing industries and say, we need you to cut back. So we've created a ten percent reserve for growth by a local, an existing industry, or for a new industry coming in.
Okay, and is there a fine associated with the notice that they violated these standards, or how does this work?
You mean with the industry?
Right.
If we have an industry that, no, there's, there's not a, there's not a fine that is automatic, we have the authority in our ordinance to apply a fine.
Okay.
But it depends upon the circumstances and the severity and repeatability, if it's something where, it's, it's like the state, when we have a violation at the wastewater plant, we get a notice of violation, and they expect us to review what happened, take necessary steps to lessen the likelihood that it would reoccur again. If we were to ignore that notice of violation and not take the necessary steps and it became a frequent type thing, or a more severe thing, then we would be subjecting ourselves to fines as well.
So you said, Don, it's a self, largely a self-monitoring, so that was my question, so they run high or low, or not where they're supposed to, does somebody else come in and check them, or is it just, they just self-monitor again and submit a new report?
As part of our program, we do three surveillance monitoring samplings throughout the, the calendar year. We go out three times ourselves, collect samples, perform the analysis, and compare our results to what the industry is routinely turning to us on a monthly basis, to see that the results that we are getting are comparable or similar to what they're doing. If there's a significant difference, then we would look at doing additional sampling, there's nothing that prevents us from going out and sampling more, or to, and certainly we have contacts with our industry, so we review that with them.
Okay, thanks, I like that word slug loads, that's kind of fun.
Yeah.
On page forty-seven, it says, "The purpose of this ordinance is to amend certain sections of chapter ninety-seven to protect the publicity on treatment works."
Does it really?
Yeah, we want to change that to publicly.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Are you guys good? Okay, thank you, Don. Hey, Don, before you, before you walk away, which, have any industry in, has any of the manufacturers in town expressed concern with this?
Not as of yet.
Are they aware of it?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
Actually, the evaluation of the local limits was, as I said, performed by H.R. Green, our MPDS requirement was to have that analysis completed and submitted to the state for their review, for their agreement, their acceptance by June first of twenty-seventeen, so it's been over a year. And when we got the evaluation from H.R. Green, approximately a year ago, we sent them a letter, our industry's, letting them know, this is what the evaluation shows, this is what the limits appear to be, they're going to be adjusted down, and just to give them a heads up. Now, we have not done anything with it, because it hasn't been adopted by the council, as mean, well, it hasn't been adopted yet, the rules, the limits haven't been put in place yet. We resent that letter here this last week to reiterate, we are now in the process of going through the adoption process on the ordinance, so.
You guys good? All right, all right, Don, thanks for keeping it rolling downhill, all right, next is resolution approving final plat of seventh addition to Stonegate Crossing subdivision, Mr. Tissler.
This is in relation to the lot previously, previously discussed with the PUD amendment, this is lot seven of the Stonegate Crossing subdivision. Previously, lots near Lawrence Drive have already been platted, lots one, two, and four on the northwest side of the development, and now requesting lot seven. Regardless of the zoning, this is a legal lot, has been approved through the preliminary plat process, was approved by the planning commission, October twenty-sixteen, and council, November twenty-sixteen, for the preliminary plat. All development within this subdivision and lot would have to meet the currently adopted PUD standards for this area, which is the D-WALL PUD. With this lot six, there is intended to be a shared access drive lining up with Sequoia Drive for the lot as it's developed to the north of this lot.
You guys good? Okay, let's move over to consent, thank you, sir. A resolution approving nuisance amendments for various properties, any issues? Number two, final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the two thousand eighteen parking lot improvements, Main Street and Valley Street Lot, Jesse.
Jesse Howe, city engineer, I'm covering public works items for tonight, again, we're releasing final payment for this project, we did have some quantity overruns and change orders that amounted to six thousand dollars. We came in over budget, which we had kind of anticipated going into this thing, but it was a need for, for the community, we did generate twenty-one parking spaces over there, so that's the long and short of it, if you guys have any questions.
Twenty-one additional.
Twenty-one additional, yeah.
You guys good? Yep, looks good.
Looks very nice.
Okay, thank you, sir. Number three, resolution approving purchase of a single axle dump truck for public works, street and sewer division.
So, this one is for the maintenance guys, we did get bids through the state system, they came in forty-seven hundred dollars over what we had budgeted. However, we do have a road grader that was also in the budget, and we're getting it through, from the county, and it's going to be about twenty thousand under what we had budgeted, so we'll be able to cover the overage. This purchase came up to a hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and sixty cents, so.
You guys good?
Good.
Number four, resolution approving an agreement with Midwest Truck Advertising for Professional Advertising Services on city buses.
Yeah, our current advertising provider is no longer offering the services, so we're just switching to basically the only other advertising company in the state that, that does it, they're based out of Des Moines. And we're, we're recommending a two-year contract with them.
Cost is going to be the same?
I think it was a little less, wasn't it?
We, it's not a cost, they pay us for advertising on the buses.
Okay.
Last year, I think, we were, we were at fourteen thousand, this current, the year we just finished might have been down to about twelve thousand, and he's got in here, this should generate, he says five to fifteen, but it really matters how much they're able to, what they're able to get onto the buses.
You guys good?
Yep.
Okay, we've got a set, thank you, Jesse, we've got a set date for public hearing for the, for September fourth, for consideration of an ordinance amending certain sections of chapter one oh five garbage and solid waste, and chapter one zero six, collection of solid waste in the City of Burlington Municipal Code, ready to touch on that? Discussion items, Paul Donald, number one.
Go through first, currently, we're under a lease agreement for operation of the pool with Most LLC, that was approved August of twenty-seventeen. Part of the terms of that lease were that they were to begin paying monthly payments of twenty-five hundred dollars, starting in September of this year, that was anticipation of receiving grant and being able to start construction this fall, and hopefully have it open this fall as well. Did not receive the CAG grant, but they're still moving forward with the project and fundraising on that, so they'd like to modify this lease agreement to better reflect actual use, probably have a payment starting in twenty-nineteen, working with them on that, but wanted to bring this before council, see if that's an issue to, I guess, not move forward with this lease, and enforcing those terms of payment of twenty-five hundred dollars starting September one. Bringing back a revised lease agreement reflecting usage and timing for the spring. And then secondary to that, we had a, as part of the CAG grant application, there's a local match, we had a resolution approving contribution of the project that reflected that twenty-five hundred dollar payment, that was going to be reimbursed over three years, back to the swim club as a match, and as well as a pump improvement that we're still looking to do the pump improvement this fall, but the payment obviously would not be able to occur, not needed for match, but still needed for their project, but couldn't occur as we're not collecting lease payments at this time, so I think would like to bring that back modified as well, reflecting the agreement. Ryan's here maybe to talk a little bit more about the requests and timing of their project.
Ryan Ritter, one seventeen, Glendale. So basically, we just have to, we have to redo the agreement, it looks like at this point, we're going to push back until starting in the, the construction in the spring. So whatever, we kind of talked, whatever works for, for you guys is what, what we'll go with, whether that's, we go with the same nine-month, or we go with the twelve-month agreement, however, whatever's easiest is what we're thinking. So we'll get back to that here the next month, but really, it's, we're, we're moving forward, we guaranteed Eric and Brad that there is some concrete work that needs to be done before we open, before the pool opens in May, and no matter what, that'll all get done, so all the deck work and everything will be done before the pool opens in May, and then, but that gives us a little more time for, for purchasing the bubble and getting that stuff going, so.
This is deck work that's been taken care of by us, right?
Not at this time, I mean, we've done some patching this summer, we've done some patching in areas that were needed, we've had some deficiencies noted through our inspection process.
Wasn't that a CIP project that was moved forward, though?
It was a CIP project that was removed based on the swim club doing it with their project.
And then we were making our contribution?
Then you're making your contribution.
Yeah.
And the other, kind of what we're, we're talking on this, and maybe I'm moving forward too fast, but right now, it's a one-year, we just had a one-year lease, and how, we don't really, how are we going to have a one-year lease when we're talking about a three, three-year payback right now, so the lease almost has to match whatever, whatever that is. I went to them with possibly doing a, a ten-year lease, or, or something, you know, whatever, whatever works, but a little bit longer lease to, so that you guys got something after the payback also, you were guaranteed, you know, at least the amount that you were paying back after that also, so.
And we talked specifically on a five-year with a five-year renewal.
Yeah, five-year with a five-year option is what we, what we talked about, so.
You've been paying attention, ten-year leases.
Yeah, that's what, and when we talked about that, that's what we said. Yeah, and I just, I didn't want it to be like it, okay, we're going to do a three-year lease, and you guys are paying us back three-year, and then if it drops after that, you guys get nothing out of it, so.
Sure.
Ryan, how much was that CAG grant for?
Hundred thousand, if we, if we had the CAG grant, it would be going up right now, we're within that hundred thousand right now, so.
So there's no way we can get it up by winter, this winter, I don't know how long it takes to put the bubble on, or?
We're, well, since the last meeting, last meeting, I think we, we said we were just inside of a hundred thousand dollars, and we've probably raised another forty thousand since then, so we're, we're sitting at like seventy thousand, somewhere in that range is where we're, we're sitting while we still have to raise. So it's, it's hard, because we pretty much have to purchase the bubble, but the bubble's the last thing that goes up, but we have to purchase the bubble to get the, the pieces that go in the concrete, so we can't even start the concrete work until we can purchase the bubble. So you pretty much have to have it all in order to get started in any way, so, so that's what we're waiting on, so, hopefully, right now, it looks like we will be done before the end of the year, but then that pushes us back to next year to start, so.
So we just have to be patient.
When do you want this lease to start?
Next year is what we're talking, the discussion that we're trying.
Next year, like April, or next year back in the fall?
Well, and that's what we're, we're trying to talk, we wouldn't start, we wouldn't start swimming, we'd do the same thing we did this year, where we'd start in May, and then, or June, whenever the pool. whenever the pool was done, and the bubble would go up in September. But we're trying to discuss of, we had lessons this year, so do we want to go a 12-year lease, so you guys are getting paid during lessons?
Twelve months.
Or, or 12-month, I'm sorry, 12-month lease, so you guys are getting, that's the, what we're trying to figure out, and it's up to the attorney as to what, how that works, so.
I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
So, you're going to take the bubble down every spring, right?
Yeah.
Where are you keeping it?
There, there's going to be a shed on the property that's part of this also, so.
In your garage.
Kind of where the fence jumps out.
Your garage, rink, as part of the green.
No, not my garage.
Yeah, but there, part of it is a shed that's where the fence jumps out by the concession area there, in that corner, there's going to be a shed, and that's where everything will get stored.
You guys good?
I'm good.
I'm excited for this project to go up. I don't want to wait till next year.
We're ready for it, too.
You guys have been working hard, though. Appreciate it.
Hey, where do you get shades like that from, Ritter?
Probably his race sponsor.
Just can't find a cool pair.
So, we, we just, we wanted to bring this back, just acknowledging there's not going to be a payment in September. We're going to work on a new lease.
Pay attention to the D.
Right away to bring back so that they have a lease in place before they move forward with their project.
Do we need to have a resolution canceling the existing lease, or?
There's termination for non-performance. I'll have to ask Patrick. I mean, if they don't pay, there's a failure, a breach of contract, but.
It'd be, it's preferable if we just had a resolution.
Yeah, we'll see if we can bring a resolution at the next meeting, just acknowledging cancellation and.
Whatever's easier.
Just acknowledging cancellation of this lease.
If you understand what that's for and are okay with what we're doing with that.
That $2,500 isn't just hanging out there.
Good deal, man, good deal. Yeah, I am getting excited about that. It's going to be, it's going to be cool. I'm about ready to go back to swimming form. All right, let me stop lying. Okay, number two discussion is a request for waiver of fees for airport.
In close to your packet is a request letter from the airport asking to a waiver of water, sewer, stormwater fees. They've been being billed for water, sewer, and stormwater fees for, well, for, in perpetuity as far as I'm, as I, as I know. But with the new ERU unit method for billing on stormwater and getting the impervious surface built into what they're being billed, I mean, they should have, technically, from an impervious surface standpoint, they should have been being billed the higher amount previously. We weren't doing that. But it is a significant thing when you think about the amount of runway that's out there, and it has, it's a significant change. You're going from a stormwater fee in the $280 range to $2,800 on a monthly basis. Actually, I think that the ERU is in the 20s, she has 2017, that's probably overall utilities. The ERU's a little bit less than that, but it's, almost all of that change is because of the way the stormwater fee is implemented with them. And so, they're requesting all fees be waived. The letter that is in your packet, they're making a notice to state code section, the state code section that's referenced in there is deals with exemption from property taxes. This isn't, the utility fees aren't property taxes. This is an irrelevant section in terms of what the request is, but the, so, but that request, the request is still out there. Just it wouldn't be relevant to what she's put in the letter.
I think, I think the solution to this is, I don't have a problem with exempting the airport from the ERU standard because to much effect, I view a runway as I do a road. It's a vital piece of infrastructure that promotes transportation.
But runways only.
But runways only.
Yeah, because they, they do realize rental income on some of the buildings and property.
Yeah, they've got separate income on other ventures out on the property, so I don't, I don't see the need to exclude those.
See, that's even a stretch for me. I mean, that's, but I mean, that's my ceiling. It's not like I'm.
I mean, you got, you got to have a runway.
Well, I know that we're still going to have a runway, it's just, we're trying to figure out some, some cost savings.
So, are you saying, don't provide the exemption for the ERU, or exempt the whole thing?
No, no, I'm not saying exempt the whole thing. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I don't like making changes. Again, we've, you know, we've done this, and I realize it's going to be, you know, more money that they're going to have to spend, but.
But we don't, we don't add up this core footage for Highway 34 and build a state. You know what I mean?
It's not, that's a, still a different deal.
It's still a piece of vital transportation infrastructure. I mean, there's private entities out there that operate, and we continue to use the ERU method on those entities. If it's a private hangar, and somebody's renting it, and there's rental income on the hangar, then you would apply the ERU method. However, if there's a taxiway for somebody to be able to get from Chicago.
I hear what you're saying.
Burlington.
I hear what you're saying.
Or runway, then we should, I, I would be in favor of eliminating the ERU method on those impervious surfaces only.
Again, I'm not, I'm not saying I adore that. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'd just rather, I'd just rather leave it be, as-is, and, you know, maybe it's time to bump up the charges on, you know, to make up the difference on, on some of the hangars. I don't know, you know, this isn't something that I'm, you know, I'm going to die on this hill, so I'm open.
If there was a desire to exempt the runways, the, the, there's a section within the ordinance that was approved that provided, in establishing the rates, it has a description of exemptions that described public right-of-way, inclusive of roadways, railroads.
Railroad crossing.
Railroad, railroad right-of-way. There's another, I can't remember what the third one that was in there. But this would be, this would be, you could add to that section and put in runways and taxiways.
I would say.
If you were willing to do that, that would, that would be, make the most sense in terms of how you would get that built within it.
Common taxiways, not all taxiways.
Common taxiways.
So, it would be taxiways used by commercial airliners. If somebody's got an airplane hangar in their backyard, and they have a taxiway to it, then that wouldn't fall under a common taxiway.
Jim, would it have to be a full exclusion, or could we meet him halfway and say we'll pay part of it?
See, that would be a partial.
Okay, so we're already doing that, okay.
Looking at the, if you did a, something like that, their, their current ERU fee is $2,760 for stormwater for inclusive of all taxiways and runways. If you excluded those, what they would still have for building surfaces, the pads, the pads right in front of the, I assume that includes the pads right in front of the hangars, parking lots, would be $540, still significantly higher than what they were before, which was probably more in the $200 range.
I have $280 on me.
But it's significantly less than $2,800.
Yeah. I, I, to me, a taxiway or a runway that's used for transportation is, it serves, serves the overall same purpose as a road that goes from here to wherever. So, we don't tax those, I don't see any, or we don't apply the ERU method to those. We shouldn't apply it to this.
If you'd be willing to see an ordinance change that modified that exemption to include, to include that language, we can bring that forward. If you don't want us entertain that, we won't bring it forward.
Well, I think whatever we do needs to be part of a maintenance rather than a, an individual negotiation, because then, then everything's up for grabs every time, and that's why we went with this. So, I, thinking about it, I don't have a problem with the runways and taxiways, and I think the word common is important. Being exempt, because I feel that would, that is much like a road out in front of someone's home, or a road that goes through a person's property. We're not going to charge them for that. So, I, I would say, I would be in favor of an ordinance change on that, but I'm definitely, we definitely need to account for the parking lots and the buildings and, and the pads in front of the hangars. It would strictly be for me, the runway and the taxiway that are common, so.
Okay.
I'm still trying to figure out how we can get more revenue to build more parking lots.
Well, but you're not also, you're not in the business of penalizing.
I know, I know.
A revenue generator for our city as well.
I know.
Give us the language.
Okay.
Hold on, I'll go from there. Okay, finally, number three. I've been waiting on this. Jake break ordinance.
We had, we had, we had someone who came forward wanting this on, and we, Katie worked with him. What date worked for him to be here, and he's not here.
He's not here.
But over the course of the last year, we've probably had two different individuals express some desire to see a Jake, discussion of Jake breaks. This individual, I think, lives, is it, would it be Archer?
Arch.
Arch? So, that would be adjacent to 34 on the east end of town?
Yeah, I used to live there.
So, right in that neighborhood, you know, the, the other individual, I think, is on the library board that made a comment about it maybe six months ago. Those are the only comments that I've heard. Now, that doesn't mean that other people haven't complained about it or have a desire to see a discussion come up for having a Jake break ordinance, or some type of a breaking system ordinance in place.
They're just concerned with the noise pollution?
For them, that was, they, they hear it from, the individual came forward, hears it from their home, and.
Yeah. Well, I'm not supporting the Jake break, but I'd just say, from living on, I lived at Fourth and Arch until a year ago, and you definitely hear the, as the semis are coming, winding into Illinois, they're, they're ratcheting up their Jake break, and it, it is a racket akin to the railroad horns. And so, you know, but by the same token, I was there 23 years, and I got used to it. So, that doesn't mean, you know, it's kind of, but I also got used to the railroad horns before they went away, but I'm blessed that they're no longer here.
So, I, my biggest problem with the Jake break ordinance is how do you enforce it? How do you catch it?
That's the question, and why would we implement something that, how are you going to enforce that for one? And two, no offense, but I look about the airport, and I hear loud planes a lot of times, and, you know, I mean, I just can't.
But if you, but if you live next to the airport, you expect to hear loud planes all the time.
Well, I mean, that's pretty close to the freeway.
That's my point. If you buy a house right next to the freeway, then you're going to expect to have noise pollution from the freeway. I mean, it comes back to enforceability. I don't want these guys to be tied up on the highway checking semis as they roll in town to make sure that they're abiding by a new ordinance.
It's not just that, too, but I mean, doggone it, what are we going to start taxing the air for blowing? I mean, you know, where is it?
Better be careful.
Taxing the air for blowing.
No offense to whoever that is.
We're mainly talking about truckers going through our community. Maybe we put up a sign that says Jake break ordinance enforced and let them go, because I see them all the time on the, on the road and other communities. Just because you put the sign up, they don't know you're enforcing it or not. You might get half of them to stop. I don't know.
All right, well, Jim, it's not.
I think, I think we need to, we at least hear.
I like your creative solution.
We'll list, at least hear him out and go from there, because I, I understand what he's talking about from living there, but you buy a home next to the highway, you're going to hear it. I mean, it's just the same thing as hearing the cars go by, so it's.
All right.
Same thing if you bought, like, when you, you know, if you, if you buy one next to railroad track, you're going to hear the train go by, so.
Well, at least we could hear him out. We can put it out there and see.
All right. Mr. Tisland, nothing on the way out? Councilwoman?
I can't think of, something's going on this weekend, but I can't tell, I can't remember what's going down, so you guys will have to fill me in. I've been out of town.
She's been, she's been wearing a couple of different hats.
Yeah.
Uh, councilman?
Hardfelt thanks to our police department, fire department, and community at large for their response to the Tama building disaster that happened. Really, I think those tragedy moments are where Burlington in particular shines, and so, great job, men and women of the community.
Touche.
Well said.
Just want to give.
Go ahead.
Just want to give a shout out to the police department for showing up at the block party. Chief came there and was showing off, talking about that he had here, and I was baffled. I don't know what that was all about, but anyways, it's good to see that, though we've, the seat has changed, and we got a new face in the chief spot that you're holding it down, just, just like before. It's good to see, appreciate that. And also, just want to reiterate what Mr. Phillips said. Outstanding. I want to get with you, I want to talk to you later about, about that. I want to make sure we recognize that, but yeah, outstanding job all the way around, all of Des Moines County, but we definitely want to recognize our, our men and women that we have in our department. Mr. Ricker?
Nothing of extreme importance. I will not be here next week or in Disney World, so, but I will call, so.
Bring me some mouthiers.
You want some mouthiers?
If you get some, I get some, too. That's all I got to say.
They'll probably fit on you, well, actually, they fit on both of your.
I've got a big head, man, so I don't know, probably won't work for me.
Chief, you had an item that we're going to need to add to the agenda for this next week that, sorry we didn't get it on, but.
Yeah, that's my fault. I apologize. I'm kind of new at this, stepping into this role. Chief Beard prepared me for a lot of things, but when this grant came up, I was going through the list, and I realized I need to get this in front of you. But it's a, I just need a resolution approving, approving an inter-local agreement between us and Des Moines County in regards to the 2018 Justice Assistant Grant. What that's provides, and I think it's $21,899, with us being the larger agency here, we have to provide for the disparate agency, which is the county. So, with that, my, I intend to buy a simulation range is what, what I intend to buy or purchase with it, which would provide scenario-based training, firearms training through simulation. Basically, it's a screen and a projector and, and the equipment to run that and house that at the police department. It would be used for all law enforcement agencies.
Go in the basement?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's what I anticipate using that money for.
That'd be nice.
I don't think we should have this in town, by the way. I used one of these simulation units at a, at a conference, and I failed. I don't want it. It's a bad memory.
Now, why are you digging this back up?
We'll give the city manager the first opportunity to read it.
Training.
Vote for this as long as I have the opportunity to watch that. So, that's, that's going to be a great resource for all law enforcement, but that's, the grant application is due, I think, by August 22nd, so I have to bring it before council next week and get that approval, so. Any questions?
Is there a match? You doing your stuff?
No, they'll, the cost of this will be a little bit higher, but I know that the county is prepared to chip in their portion and ours. I think the cost of the unit itself is 28, 29,000.
Okay.
So, it's within reach.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
You bet.
And I don't, I don't have anything else, so. You're on track, Don, with everything, and, I mean, the biggest thing that we have going on is trying to get the surveys out and all the steps necessary to transition on the carts. How is that all proceeding?
Well, actually, this weekend, when I went home, I felt probably the best I've felt for quite a while pertaining to the solid waste program.
Sweet.
We've got, we've got the new trash tags ordered. They should be here about the middle of October. Are changing the trash tag color from an orange to a yellow. Changed the text on the tags, but otherwise, they'll be the same size. I'm not really sure how it's going to work with the retailers as far as whether they're going to bring their old orange ones back in from their registered drawers and exchange them two-for-one, or whether they'll just use them. Obviously, the customer, the citizens who have the orange trash tags in their hand, two times $2 is $4, so until they use up those tags, or if they use them for bulky items, we still have that program, too, as well, that trash tags can be used for, but the, the customers, the, the citizens aren't going to be out anything. I'm just not sure how the retailers will deal with that.
I think that we'll probably end up working with them where they can do either one. They'll have the option to bring them back or use them up.
The waste paper, the newsletter we send out annually, usually that goes out in June. We held that back because we wanted to, well, while we knew we were making the change, we didn't want to put out any information that wasn't. didn't want to put out any information that wasn't accurate. Um, that should be going in the mail, uh, this, uh, coming Friday, which is probably about the same time the mailer survey for the selection, the choice of cart, that should also be going in the mail Thursday, Friday this week. So, the resident should see our wastepaper, which has, uh, a large section devoted to the new cart program, they should be receiving the mailer, uh, first of next week as well for the cart selection. Um, so, I think everything is coming together that way. Uh, there's still a great deal of, uh, traffic, foot traffic at the library about the carts, I think we've taken probably somewhere in the neighborhood of six or seven hundred copies of handouts, they just keep calling us, hey, we're getting low. Uh, so there's, there's an interest out there. I still think there's some confusion out there, uh, some people say, well, I'm not gonna make a change, I'm just gonna continue doing what I'm doing now. Uh, you don't have a choice, you have to use one of the carts for the collection of your trash, um, and, uh, if they ignore the mailer, they're gonna get a sixty-five-gallon cart, and their water bill will be adjusted accordingly, and, um, as you understand, as you know, there is no grace period for the changing of a cart, so, um, it's gonna be thirty-five dollars, you get that sixty-five-gallon cart, you threw that, uh, uh, mailer away, you chose not to answer it, you get your sixty-five-gallon cart, it'll charge, cost you thirty-five dollars, it changes something else. Trash tags will be going four dollars November first. Um, we still have some loose ends to tie up, we have to figure out where the carts are gonna be delivered to, off the semi and assembled, and, of course, then there's the distribution, which should begin around, uh, September twenty-fourth, and they should all be distributed to the residents by, uh, October sixth at the latest. Uh, one thing that, uh, may cause some confusion, likely will cause some confusion, is that regardless of where your garbage is currently collected, curbside or alley, the delivery of these carts are going to be to curbside. So even if you have alley collection, the, hopefully, most houses have addresses on them, I'm sure they'll use, uh, GPS and, uh, that type of thing to try to identify the houses, but all the carts will be delivered to curbside. There's the issue, if you're a landlord, um, and you have an empty apartment or apartments, and the carts are delivered to that curbside there, who's gonna take those carts back up to the property? Or if you go on vacation, who's gonna take that cart from the curbside? Is that cart gonna sit there at curbside for weeks and weeks? Hopefully, neighbors will be neighbors and take the carts back to the house, or they'll make arrangements for relatives to take the carts back to the house, but they're gonna be delivered to curbside regardless of whether it's alley or curbside collection, so, people need to be watching for that.
What color did you end up going with, Don?
Uh, they're gonna be a dark gray. They're gonna be a dark gray with a, a dark, a dark gray with a dark blue lid, is what they'll be. They'll have the city logo on them.
You said gray with blue?
Yes.
Okay.
You guys good?
Yep.
You did put on your wastewrap, uh, comment about, uh, ongoing discussions that we're probably gonna be having over the next few months.
Citywide cleanup, that's, uh, included in that, the wastepaper indicating that, uh, one of the suggestions has been to go to more of a bulky item program, and, uh, I, I personally think that's the direction we'll be going. Uh, I'm not really sure how that program will work, how it'll be ultimately set up, and, uh, there's also been discussion, I know, at council level expressed an interest about, uh, having, uh, being able to arrange for a special pickup at your property by prepaying so much money to go and have a truck pull up to the curbside and load the material on, uh, more like what has been done in the past with the general, uh, citywide cleanup program. Um, I, I'm, I'm kind of a troglodyte as far as, uh, uh-
Troglodytes.
Good word.
You know, as far as, uh, computer stuff and, and, um, Julie at, uh, Waste Water Plant is suggesting, well, people pay online and, and they do things online, rather than them having to go to city hall and write a check or something like that, maybe we'd set something up. So, there's some odds and ends that we need to set up to deal with, uh, how that gets paid for, whatever.
Could you bill a water bill? Could you just add it to the water bill?
Uh, no, I think it would have to be a payment to city hall like they do, maybe for, I, I can't think of any fees off the top of my head, uh, contain, garbage containers for, or private haulers, they have to get a permit to put it on city right-of-way.
Okay.
Uh, they use PayPal, whatever that is, I don't know. There is still confusion out there, I took a call today from a resident saying, I'm gonna go with the middle-sized cart, I was at the library, I looked at the informational sheet, I'm gonna go with the middle cart, right now, on my water bill for trash, it says forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Is the fee for the cart on top of that? And I said, no, no, that, that will replace that fee, so, the fee that's on your water bill right now would go away, being replaced by whatever the appropriate fee, monthly fee is for the cart that you choose. It's not on top of.
And for those that, uh, here's the question, two things, one is, there's still an issue with some people, um, wanting to dispose of their old trash cans and wanting the city to come get it. So that, that is one issue that I, I still would like to try to find some type of resolve with. And then I had a question, Lacey said she heard that, she had to sit her, and I just want you to, to say it, she's watching, that she, she was told that she had to put her trash bag, if she, after she gets the trash cans, on top of her trash can, that she can't set the trash beside the trash can, can you clarify?
Well, the intent is that the extra garbage bag, if that's what they're going to have, sits on top of the fully closed lid of the container, uh, makes, makes it less susceptible to being gotten into by an animal or something to that effect. Um, so that is the intent, and that are the, that is the instruction, that if you have an extra bag, to set it on top of the can, or the cart, I'll call it a cart, and that we would be collecting it from that cart.
Okay, now, what if, what if she sets the bag, and she doesn't set it fully on the, on the trash can, and the bag accidentally falls over? Are they gonna leave that trash, or are they gonna take that trash with them?
I'm sure that if they find a properly tagged and prepared bag of trash aside the cart, that they will pick that up. Now, if a dog or a raccoon or something gets into it and tears it open, and it's got garbage spread all over the place, then that's another matter.
Okay.
Another reason to go big?
And, 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 and as far as the garbage existing cans, uh, they are going to be allowed to be used in the leaf program, has, as they have been for the last twenty, well, not, yeah, twenty years, well, not twenty years, but, they'll be used, allowed for that use, uh, if they, if they don't have a desire to use the cup, a can any longer, perhaps a neighbor would use it if they have a lot of leaves, um, or storage for something in the garage, but ultimately, if you're going to get rid of your can, you need to put a note on it saying, please take my can. They will not take the can, will not require a trash tag to be attached to a can that's being thrown away. Now, if you have the second, that's your second can with trash in it, well, then obviously you're gonna have to have a trash tag attached to it for them to take it, but have a note on the can saying, please take this can.
Okay.
Man, you're just full of answers tonight.
Yeah.
Everybody's good?
Glad you're feeling better about the solid waste.
I am, too.
James?
Don's put in a lot of work on this, so.
We're proud of you, Don.
Not done yet.
Keep up the good work, Don. Speaking of Don, Don Harder's in the audience, and his hair's perfect, good to see him. James?
I just would like to note, uh, that, that the owners of the, the Tama building are, I mean, they're, they've communicated with us, letting us know their intent to try to, to rebuild or, on that site. Now, we have no clue how all of this process will work, the building is still being, I mean, it's, the insurance company's still going through the investigation process, so it's sometime before they're able to do anything, but they're trying to figure out what they can do to, to, to rebuild on that site, if at all possible.
Well, good deal. All right. That's all you got?
That's all I have.
Okay, James, that's it for tonight, everybody, thank you, good night.
You're good.